Debbie.
Okay, I wasn't sure, my internet's a little unstable. So Debbie Swanson, present from Ypsilanti Township.
Thank you. Newman? Mr. Newman and John.
Yes, I guess mine is a little unstable too. John Newman, Ypsilanti Township resident.
Supervisor in the Township Civic Center, present. Trustee Wilson is not on the agenda, is not on the meeting yet. First item is consent agenda, the minutes and statements unchecked. Is there any questions regarding that?
No.
All right. Mr. Winters, are you on the? No, I do not see him yet. So we'll go to old business. We have the second reading, the proposed order 2021 494, which is ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 37 Liquor. And the first reading was held at the February 2nd regular meeting. And I know there was several changes and I'm not sure Stan, are you taking the lead or is?
I think Mike has this portion.
Okay. Michael?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Evening.
I tried to format this in a way so that it would be very easy to understand. And as you read through the ordinance changes.
Michael? Could you state your name, please, and for the record?
Very sorry, Michael Radzik, Director of Community Standards.
Thank you.
You're welcome. As you read through it, it looks like the changes I made came out in blue instead of red on this copy. But the changes that were made for this second reading are only the changes that were suggested and recommended by the board after first reading. So all of the original changes that we've already discussed and vetted have been incorporated. And what's different here are the changes from the version that you saw back in February. And there's just a few of them. I'll go through them. On the first page of the proposed ordinance 494 in Section 37-1, there was, there were several comments about the liquor committee's discretion shall or may meet with potential applicants. So the wording was changed and clarified to say that the liquor committee shall seek to meet with qualified applicants. So I think that pretty much, I hope, addresses all the concerns that were brought up regarding that. Moving forward, several pages later is the next change. Paragraph D under application fees. There was a lot of discussion regarding the wording that was taken from the original ordinance, which gave the township clerk discretion to make changes in the fees. And it was, it was brought up that the clerk's office wouldn't necessarily have all of the information necessary in order to make those determinations. And I think trustee or trustee Eldridge, Trevor Eldridge, I'm sorry, brought up the fact that it should, this is more of a decision for the township board. So this was changed. We struck all the references to the clerk's office. And it was changed to simply say that the applicant may seek consideration for fee reductions from the township board at the time of deliberation. So in other words, at the time it comes before the board for deliberation and a decision, the applicant could seek a adjustment or a reduction if they felt they had need. And then the township board would be the arbiter and the decider of that. Moving forward, then a couple of more pages. This was the section 3732 and 3733, these were additions. These were not actually in the first reading, but there was a lot of discussion. And I believe Supervisor Stumbo specifically recommended that we add something in here to address the problems that we've been experiencing with unlicensed premises that hold these events and these leased out spaces for parties where alcohol is involved and there's violations of the state liquor law. So what I did, and this is, this is going to be very strictly subject to Mr. Winter's approval. What I did was I went to state law from the Liquor Control Commission's recommendation. The statute is MCL 436.1913, which specifically addresses unlicensed premises and activities on unlicensed premises. An example of this would be should that we just where the leased out space were a private event and it turned into mayhem where the police were called and there was alcohol consumption and sales and all kinds of things going on that was illegal. So essentially, we would be adopting this misdemeanor state statute by reference. And it would give us the authority and give us local control over prosecution of people who violate the state liquor control laws. But they're doing it in a, in a place that does not have a liquor license. So the Liquor Control Commission doesn't have jurisdiction because there is no license, but we would, I believe, if we adopt this, so. Attorney winners would, would have to weigh in and it may, he may need some time to further review this. But I believe this would be in proper form for us to adopt this misdemeanor code verbatim by reference from state law. And then I added penalties specifically for this. The penalties would be the same as it would be if you violated any other portion of the ordinance. However, besides the fines and court costs, I added in the section, and again, this is subject to our attorney's approval, that restitution may be ordered by the court for any reasonable costs of public safety response. It would be needed as a direct result of a violation of this section. And if the unlicensed premises is a registered business in Ypsilanti Township, that their business registration certificate could be subject, may be subject to revocation as a result of this action. So it just kind of incentivizes good behavior, if you will, for these places not to do these unfortunate and dangerous situations. Those were the only changes I included. And the page after that, I included for your reference, the Liquor Control Commission Advisory that's on their website regarding alcohol consumption in unlicensed premises, which speaks in detail discussion regarding the section that I just reviewed for you. So those are the changes. And I went through both my personal notes from the February meeting. I also went through the meeting minutes for both the work session and the board meeting to make sure that I captured everyone's comments and suggestions. And I think I did so. If I did miss anything, I apologize and we can deal with that tonight.
Mr. Winters, did you have an opportunity to look at this?
Well, I've had a chance to look at it and I had a chance to have a conversation with Mike or liquor committee about it. I guess the only question I would have is, I know a violation of our zoning ordinance, whenever we, whenever we go to court, for example, if a party is in violation of our zoning ordinance, it constitutes what they call a nuisance per se, which gives the court authority to issue injunctive relief. In fact, I think we're kind of close to trying to take on a couple of those locations that had the parties back in January and February. We just near the final reports. The only question I would have is, is there a better spot to have this in a code as it would be part of even a zoning ordinance? Because that would, a violation of this and a zoning ordinance would constitute a nuisance per se. Number one and number two, I know the intent is to try and deal with the criteria for those who are actually licensed establishments and having references to an unlicensed establishment in this context. It might also raise some legal issues about having a more than one objective that sometimes runs afoul of some of the drafting. So it's something I need to think about and talk about more about, but it belongs in the township's code. I'm just not really sure exactly if it belongs in this one or if it should be part of a, right now, we're updating the zoning ordinance right now. I know that Ben, as well as Megan have been doing a lot. And I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud that they might end up being in one of those miscellaneous provisions there as well.
So is it okay to have it? Is it okay to have it in both? Location?
There is a, it's a, it's a, it's a kind of archaic legislative rule that if you have more than, you're trying to do more than one, cover more than one topic in a piece of legislation, it can violate some of these archaic constitutional requirements. And I'm just concerned about having an unlicensed premise in, you know, mixed in with the licensing process for those who are going to become licensed. And I just need more time to think about this and talk about it.
Well, this is second reading.
My suggestion under the circumstances, I think it's much better to be safe. So my suggestion would be to simply strike those two sections, 3732 and 3733 from second reading. And then if it turns out this would be an appropriate place, we could amend it later. And if not, it would go someplace else.
Does it?
Yeah.
That's okay with me. I'm the one that asked for it, so that I'm okay with it. I don't want to violate any archaic laws or anything like that.
Archaic, maybe a better word than archaic.
Okay.
Well, I've learned from, I've learned from Mr. Winters over the years. When you do rush through things unnecessarily, bad things can happen. So I would heed his advice in this case.
Okay. Unless, if everyone's in agreement, we can strike that.
Sure.
Doug, is that all right with you?
Yes, I mean, it's going to go somewhere in the code. I'm just not really sure if it's.
Okay, that's fine. Understood. Any questions or comments from trustees or board members?
No.
All right, I don't see any hands raised, so. Good job.
Thank you.
Number two is to request to approve an update liquor license application. Stan?
It's really the same thing that we saw at first reading. I think we incorporated everything that was asked for, but again, as Mike said, if I've missed something here, please let me know and we'll add that. But I believe it's ready to go. There has been some inquiries, but nobody's made application for the new license. So if we can get this approved in conjunction with the new ordinance, I think we'd be in good shape.
Questions or comments from board members? Debbie?
I saw there were a couple like red stars on the plan. Is there a significance to that or? Red star might not be, it's not the right term for it, but appersand or whatever I think it's called.
Yeah, if you look after number, where you see those Debbie, on page two of the document, if you look at page three at the top under number 14, it just explains what those red asterisks
Okay.
they're indicating for rather than.
Okay, they'll stay in there. Okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if that was something that was changing. And then the other question I had is, so we've agreed that the 30 day, the language about timeframe has been removed. So somebody comes, they pull one. They have as much time as they need to fill it out. And then that's what we, I just want to understand because that's what we agreed would happen, right?
Yeah, they have whatever amount of time they want.
Okay. And then do we have an amount of time? I, I might have forgotten this part because we've talked about this a lot. Amount of time where we have to act on it? Like, is there a set time in this policy for us to have to act in a certain amount of days once it's turned in?
No, there's not. In the past, we've just tried to act in a reasonable manner as we gather the information and can set up a meeting with the applicant. But there's never been a timeframe either in this or in the previous application.
I'm good with that.
Other comments or questions? Gerald Rowe? Your mic's off.
I'm sorry, I switched over to my cell phone because I don't know if everyone else's internet's being funny, but mine was. So I didn't know if I missed any. I heard attorney winners talk about whether it was, you know, needed to be in this or in the zoning. And so I just, I wanted to get that down for the notes. So if someone could just repeat that to me. And then also, I just wanted to state that we do have two applicants who have submitted already. And I know that, you know, people are aware of that. I know it hasn't gone to the liquor commission yet. But I just want to, you know, be sure that our understanding is that because they filled out the old application, those are the, you know, there's no extra hoop for them to like meet because we're now passing this.
Who did you send it to Heather?
Um, I think Lisa just asked for a follow-up because we sent it out, I think at the beginning of February, to be honest. And Lisa just asked for a follow-up. And I know that she heard back from Dan Kimball, who said that they were both good to go from his perspective. And then I know that I believe, I think Mike Razik, you wrote back and said that you'd get to it later this week. So it just hasn't gone before the liquor committee yet. And I think it was sent to Dave Bellers as well.
And that was the one on Ross and Bill and Grove, right? And?
And there's this other one at a hotel. It's at the Hampton Inn and he wants, yeah. And his is a little, a little different, but anyways.
We're used to different, don't worry about them.
Yeah.
Do you need clarification on the actual ordinance, Heather still, or? Did you hear what we said?
Just. No, I missed it. Whenever Doug was talking is when I cut out. So just, you know, the, the simple point of whatever you guys left off with, is it a good to go tonight? Or we wanted to discuss it.
It is good to go Heather. I'm sorry, section 3732 and 3733 would be struck for second reading. Everything else is in order.
Thank you.
All right. Everyone good? Good job. The next item under new business is a request to approve the memorandum of understanding with Ann Arbor YMCA for 2021.
Well, sir, I thought it said it was adjustable.
Open day of the level.
Please say your.
What happened? Okay. We're just going to talk about the YMCA 2021 agreement. Is Mr. Winters has reviewed it. Lisa and the clerk's office is still working on a certificate of insurance, but it doesn't start until June, correct? Are there any questions on this agenda item?
No. I, I was re-reading where the, was, was this for the, the summer where the community center on Clock Row will provide the place? And the YMCA will provide the, not teachers, but the council, yeah, staff.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and so we'll pay, they'll pay. Kind of confused as to who's going to pay. I know it was like 125.
The participants will pay and then the township will get 10% of whatever revenue minus scholarship money, of course.
Okay. All right. All right, thanks.
Yeah. Mike, do you have anything to add or did I cover it?
Yeah, the, the lease fee this year, I believe, is $300 per week or 10%, whichever is greater. And we did increase that a little bit from 2020 due to an increased amount of space they're using in our facility.
Other questions are coming? Debbie?
I just, I just wondered about food. Like, do they bring their lunches or is there a, like, how does that work? Because it looks like the day is a long day.
Yeah, I believe the YMCA has a lunch program through some of their resources that they do provide lunch for the enrollees as part of their program. But I also believe that the enrollees can also bring their own lunch if they so choose.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Winters, is it okay to sign it contingent upon receiving that?
What I would suggest is that the YMCA signed it first and, and then you and Heather authorize to sign it on behalf of the board just to at least try to get these contracts completed by the other side first, because that makes it better for the clerk's office and for the township, I believe. And I think that I know last year we tried to do this and the COVID kind of got in the way. And hopefully this, this will be a better year for this to happen. But the insurance certificates need to be on file, but otherwise it's in proper form.
Okay. Madam Chair. Gloria?
Yes, Madam Chair. I don't know if I missed this or not. How many participants in a classroom or in a program for this? Program?
Michael?
Do they have a quota?
I thought it was.
It is 16 to 20 kids per week, I believe. And they were going to divide them into different pods in the different classrooms to consider social distancing.
Perfect, thank you.
Heather?
Yeah, I just give a really brief point to what attorney winners just mentioned about the contracts. Our office has been working really hard to make sure that all of those are received as, you know, just a place that, that we can improve. And so as of today, I believe we're only missing two contracts. One is for a streetlight and one is that senior nutrition thing with the county that I think I email her every day about. So I just wanted to share that our clerk's office is really trying to improve that process. And we're thankful for attorney winners counsel on that as well.
Excellent. Any other comments? No? Michael, you good? Okay. The next item is to wait, request to waive the financial policy and purchase a 2021 board expedition through the MyDeal government fleet services for the fire department in the amount of $39,471, which is budgeted. Chief Copeland is also on the Zoom call. Are there any questions regarding this? Gloria? I'll lower your hand, I'm sorry. Debbie? Have your hand raised?
Okay. So I have two on this one, and they might just be clarifying questions because I'm new and I'm trying to understand the process. So I'm wondering why we waive a financial policy, like if we have one, why we, like when we make a decision to waive a policy like that.
The MyDeal, we're a member of Michigan MyDeal and they bid it out statewide.
Okay.
So it's our financial policy needs to be updated. And I know they've been working on it, but we added MyDeal as a authorized, not vendor, they're not vendors, but they bid it out statewide. And so it's still bid, it's just not bid by us. It was bid by the state of Michigan.
So that's the reason why we're waiving it because it was bid through a process that doesn't match the financial process we have. Am I understanding that right?
But we did add MyDeal as part of our process. We just haven't updated the actual financial policy yet. Chief Copeland is, did I say that correctly? Unmute. Chief, you're looking good on that Zoom.
Am I muted or?
Yes, you're unmuted. Yeah.
Okay, yes, you said that correctly. Well, first of all, Eric Copeland, Fire Chief of Ypsilanti Township for the record, and good evening to everyone. And you did say that correctly Brenda. The MyDeal is a way, I think, to expedite the bidding process because it's already contained in that deal. And we have used this for the last two purchases of utility vehicles in MyDeal. So, so we're just following the same protocol.
Okay.
Is there another question, trustee Swanson?
Well, the only other one I wondered about was, um, like, so we're not able to get this deal from a local, like a local provider, like we have a lot of dealers in an area that's closer, even in Washtenaw County. It looks like this person bidding is in a different county. If I saw it right. So I'm just wondering, I mean, I'm thinking that we would prefer, when possible, to get things from our own local or as close to our local community as we could. So I understand if we're getting a better deal through the bidding, like lots of entities do that. But that would just be one concern I have.
They do have the opportunity to bid on MyDeal and be part of the state process, so.
What I would say to that is that Gornow Ford, when we're looking for Ford product, there are dealers around the state that bid off of the MyDeal list and they offer these particular vehicles at a certain price. It isn't to my knowledge that our local dealer, Gene Budman, is part of this process or that their costs were probably not as low in terms of the bid process as Gornow Ford is. And they offer these vehicles by all the manufacturers. But I was told years ago that this is Ford country, so we buy Ford. So we've been buying Ford products for the last, since I've been, since I arrived.
Yep. Debbie, is your hand still raised? Okay. Any other questions?
For answering the questions. I appreciate that. And I'm lowering it now.
Any other questions or? Okay. Thanks, Chief. The next item is a request to accept a proposal from OHM for the professional engineering for the parking lot improvements at Hewitt Road. I know that Matt Parks from OHM is also on the Zoom call. Other questions regarding this? This is one of the capital improvements we tried to do last year and because of COVID, we we couldn't. And it's on the capital improvement list that the chief provided for the millage for capital improvements to the fire department.
Yep. And we actually, this is Matt Parks with OHM. We, we actually looked at this Hewitt station with the chief back in 18 when we did Ford Boulevard. So we have some history with this one. Proposal that you have in your packet is February 9th basically takes us through the design all the way through bidding. Assuming you get acceptable bids, we'll be back in front of you sometime late spring for a summer construction, I think is the plan, right, Chief?
That is correct.
Matt, did you give your name?
Yes, I did. Matt Parks, OHM.
Okay, thank you.
You had like a four month window on this project. After the bids, I think the process starts after the bids are accepted. Am I correct or does this entail the entire process, the four months window?
Yeah, yeah, the schedule, obviously, we've been able to keep construction going, but the goal would be to get this out pretty quickly to bid within the next few months, just so you can secure. within the next few months, just so you can secure the best bids. Because I know contractors, if you try to bid something mid to late summer, it gets extremely competitive. And so to get the best prices will be, will be aiming to try to hopefully get this out to bid sometime in, in May, I would guess, early May.
Questions are coming? Normally, we try to do it earlier than that, right, Matt?
Yeah, yeah, if you can, if you can, March, March, April is over the winter for spring constructions, even better. But in this situation, we moved, moved pretty quickly. I think this will be a pretty quick design, though. So if we can do anything to expedite it, we'll, we'll get it out quicker.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. There's no other businesses. Are there board member updates? Gloria?
No, not this time.
Okay.
And Chair. Yeah, I just, one quick one. It was the first time for me going through a tax season, and I just wanted to thank Mike Saranen, Mike Hofmeister, Karen Wallen, Robin Castle Heinz for their help in manning the front desk, as well as your office and your staff and Clerk Row, her staff, and RSD's folks down here on the first floor. So they made it much easier for us to get through the first year, and I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Trustee Swanson? Do you have any?
I just said that was awesome. That everybody worked together, that's awesome. I appreciate hearing that.
Trustee Newman?
No, I didn't have anything. I thought that was good, too, that, you know, everybody was able to work together for the common good.
Trustee Wilson?
Yeah, actually, I just had a question, actually, for Attorney Winters. I recall the Open Meetings Act, the last I remember, it was extended through March thirty-first. Has there been any updates on extending that out for us to continue to, continue to meet virtually?
I'm not sure. I think Brenda and I were talking about it today, where they you could have twenty-five people maybe at a meeting, but you still have to have a Zoom meeting on top of the twenty-five limitations. So I'm not sure how that would actually work with trying to do a Zoom meeting while trying to do a headcount of people present. And I, I think they will probably get some more direction here in the days and weeks ahead. But I think Brenda may have some more information in what we were talking about earlier today about trying to do both in-person meeting and then still have that by Zoom. So Brenda might have more clarity than what I know at the moment.
It just came out today around three o'clock to me, so I, and so I, and I haven't had the opportunity to talk to Heather and Stan either. But I think it would be difficult to limit people to twenty-five and then also allow Zoom with our setup in our boardroom the way it is. So when you have a Zoom meeting and seven board members or seven people on a laptop are together, it interferes. If the mic's off, it, it might work, but normally people forget to mute themselves, you know. It's very hard to do, but it just came out today and it was twenty-five people. I don't know how you can limit people to a board meeting to twenty-five. I just don't know how you, how we do that. So I was going to talk to some other people and Stan and Heather, just to see what they thought. But as a person chair in the meeting, I don't know, that's very difficult.
Yeah, understandable.
Yeah, and I, I think it's, you know, I just read or heard today that everyone should be, have their vaccinations by May, the end of May is the prediction. So that would be, you know, better, right? And they increased the occupancy in the restaurants and gymnasium and workout facilities. And so it's hot off the press, so I, I don't know the answer exactly. It's up to the board, of course, whatever they would prefer to do. I just think it would be difficult to manage that right now.
Yeah, I would say if they allow us, we should, you know, extend it until, you know, sometime in the summer when things seem right.
Right, yeah, and so we'll keep you posted on that, Heather?
Yeah, um, just on that, the question about, am I, yeah, am I muted? About that, I do believe that, if I'm not mistaken, the executive order says we can do virtually and through the end of the year. Not saying that we want to, but just knowing that's an option, and I do agree, I would love to sit with you all in person again, one of these days. But, um, and then I didn't know, Madam Chair, if you wanted to talk about that that we had sent over.
The Drain Commission and the Fire Chief, or I'm sorry, the Water Resource Commission would like to do a cleanup day like they did in West Willow last year. But they would like to do it at the fire station and Chief Copeland. And then the county has worked out a an agreement to actually do that. So we were, it needs to be fine-tuned a little bit, but basically, we just was going to ask the board once we get the agreement that's finalized to authorize a township cleanup day hosted by the Washtenaw Resource Commissioner and, and his staff in Washtenaw County at our fire station on Ford Boulevard. So I think we got it, received it yesterday, correct? Right, Chief, you sent it over yesterday, so.
That is correct. The, what is it called, the Public Works Director, I think is his title, Theo Eggermont. And I guess he had conversations with you, Brenda, and he touched base with me about utilizing our Ford Boulevard's fire station for this dump day for the township. Which, after getting the details, I didn't see any reason why we, we should not harshly welcoming to this in the township. So he sent over a MOU regarding it, and we're still working out the details of that MOU. So I just wanted, he had a proposed date of the twenty-seventh, I think, of this month, which I needed to get it before you guys tonight, I thought. The sooner the better, so we can nail this down.
I talked to Stan a little bit, and we weren't sure if it had to go before the board, but it would be better to have the blessing of the board in support of doing this with the Water Resource Commission. That's what I call Evan Pratt, I'm not, Theo must have a different title, but in Washtenaw County, and make sure our attorneys, you know, have a chance to review it. But we were wondering if we could add that under other business, if it's possible. Heather just shared the, it's a draft agreement, she just shared it. They did it last year only, it was in Westwell, I believe it was at the church last year. So they bring out a big dumpster and it's a cleanup day, and people can bring, which is good. You know, to have a spring cleanup day and seems like a long-term contract. Chief, I didn't know if you wanted to do it every year at, at the fire station?
I thought it was just a, a one-year deal on the, the deal he sent forward, Theo. But he explained to me some of the details, that there were three to four, I think, thirty-yard dumpsters. And this would only, this event would only happen on one day for about four hours. And in the past, I think he did say he used, utilized a church in the West Willow area to do it, but there was only about twenty people, he thought, that, that came. I would anticipate there might be more this time because we're centrally located. And we have a, what would you call it, almost like a turnaround where you can drive through and discard materials. So I, I thought this would be the perfect site also for it. But my concern was whether this was going to be staged, those dumpsters would be there for a period of time, which I just didn't want that on our site that long because then you might have some clandestine dumper's come and leave stuff on our site. But he said, yes, sure, me, that's not the case, and they would clear the site the day of or the day after and make sure everything is off our site.
It's March fifteenth through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, and it can be renewed annually for up to two years. Which is good to have it scheduled, I guess, you know.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Trustee Wilson?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think it was twenty nineteen, they had it at the church right on Tyler Road, Whitehead Memorial. I went out there and assisted with some of the residents who needed help lifting it up to the big dumpster. I was out there with Joanne McCollum, and we were, I don't know how many residents came out, but I do know that they filled those things up within it's a four-hour timeframe, they filled them up within an hour and a half or two hours, it was pretty quick. It was about three or four big dumpsters, though. A lot of people came out, I should say, there was a lot of stuff that was disposed of. But I'm not sure the, how many residents were involved, but it was a good event because those things got filled up pretty quickly.
Excellent, Gloria?
Yes, Madam Chair, I did have one thing, I don't know if everyone knew this, but I'm looking at my phone. Vaccination for seniors, March the eighth at Christian Tabernacle Baptist Church. Starts at ten o'clock, and you have to be sixty-five years or older. First two hundred seniors register who live in the area code of four eight one nine seven and four eight one nine eight. And then I have two phone numbers, so I don't know if you got that text, Brenda, or not.
Um, I, I think I got an email.
You got an email.
Is that Pastor Davis?
Pastor Davis, and I, I believe Bishop Dwight Wall is involved, too, I think.
Yeah, but is that his church?
Yes, that's his church, I believe. A Christian Tabernacle, let me see the address, yeah, on nine eight three East Michigan Ave, that should be his address.
Yeah, that's really.
Anybody wants a number, I can give it to them. I hear people, they're looking for more people.
Yeah, they.
Doses.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Was it Heather next? Or no, you, is your hand still up, Heather, or should it be done?
Um, no, I, I have another comment, but if someone wants to go first, they can, if you have another.
Madam Chair, can I just say also, they have to register, you just can't walk up in there. So if you need the number, I can give it to you, so I don't want you to just think, tell them to go get it, because that's, I don't think that's going to happen.
Okay.
Okay.
And so you call and register?
Yes, ma'am.
May I have, want to give up?
Okay, I'm gonna give you the number here, Pastor Davis, seven three four nine seven two forty-eight twenty or Mary Bass, seven three four five four five twenty-one oh nine.
Okay. That's great.
Okay, yes, it is.
Thank you, Trustee Newman?
Yes, I had a couple of questions, but this and I don't know if it's, it's proper or not. Where are we as far as getting vaccines? I know we were waiting on the county to get the vaccines, do we have enough?
I don't think they have enough, but I do know they have been really focusing on four eight one nine seven and four eight one nine eight. And you know, a lot of the homebound residents as well. So I, I see the difference, but of course, there's just not, there's really not enough vaccines yet. I know the teachers are still trying to get theirs before they resume school. So it's better than it was, Jen, but maybe Johnson and Johnson getting approved, you know, is going to help as well.
Yeah.
I appreciate what the county has started to do now to really focus in. So I think they're making a difference, but
Yeah, okay.
A lot of people.
And, and, and what day was that cleanup? And, and I don't, oh, go ahead.
On the cleanup for Chief? I'm not gonna add it, yeah.
March seventh, I think, with the proposed date. And I'd be remiss if I didn't add, I thought he was looking for more dates to do this also in the township. I kind of figured out that this is a multiple, or they're looking to do this not only just one time, but multiple times in the township.
Yeah, it says March twenty-seventh, I think, is. But once we get it, then we can share it out, put it in our website and let everyone know.
Okay, and, and is that, I'm not very familiar with that. Is that where everybody, all the residents can bring their not trash, but things they want to get rid of?
Yeah, we, we call it community cleanup, but it is trash.
Okay.
It's community cleanup, um, yes, it's open, you know.
Okay.
It's not limited, Mr. Winters?
Actually, I can't find my hand button on this Zoom, damn it. But my, kind of my question, I guess, is, um, I was just a little bit kind of confused about the MOU. If this is in, is this in, is this the result of the Vermin Services contract, or is this something over, something different? Because I was trying to imagine how you have, listening to Trustee Wilson, it certainly makes a lot of sense to have the location where you're targeting the cleanup as opposed to the Ford Boulevard fire station where there's trucks coming in and out. I was just kind of wondering, and if, at the end of four hours, if what Trustee Wilson was saying, and maybe less than two hours, it becomes filled up. Are they going to take those out and switch new ones in? Or is it just four dumpsters and first come, first served? Because I, I was trying to get a handle on just how to help with this MOU, because I don't, it's not really clear to me if it's the result of the Vermin Services contract, where you're trying to.
Yeah. I think in twenty nineteen it was, right, Trustee Wilson, I think that was.
Yeah.
But we know from the, the baiting, the rat baiting within our storm systems that it is the highway of the rats have expanded. And so to have a cleanup day for more than just one area, they're going to open it, you know, they're going to open it up for the entire area to come there. Did that answer your question, then?
Well, I guess the question that I had was that if they fill up that quickly, the day set aside for the cleanup, is, is it better to have a plan in place that you can take those dumpsters and put in four more? Is it, otherwise, you have a lot of people that are going to be bringing in trash with nothing to, but to take it back to where they, where, where they came from? I'm just saying, I don't, I don't know.
I'm the coordinator of it, they did it before and it filled up, it was successful, according to Theo and Evan Pratt, it was very successful. The idea is to get all the unwanted bulky items out of your household area so that the Vermins can't find places to shelter, is, you know. It helps with that, it does help with that, but it does help with just having a cleanup day. They do it at EMU, the same thing, Reinerston Stadium, they used to schedule them there as well, Doug. So I, I don't know, I think having eight there, just in case we fill it up, I'm happy to have four, to be honest. But I'm not a bulky expert. Is anyone on a Zoom call?
I, I think if it's multiple dates, then that could be sufficient to, I guess, depending on how frequent we do it. That could fulfill kind of what Attorney Winters is saying, if we're filling up that quickly, you know, can we get more?
I'm guessing we with the building, they will, they will come, I guess, I think if we had it. I know at the compost site, I mean, they're filled there, too. A lot of people are really cleaning up and, you know, taking stuffing to the compost site as well. But this is no charge, so it's better. If they have more I don't, they'll let us know, I guess, I don't, I mean, I don't have the answers on it, since I just saw it yesterday. They were going to do it at Galt Village at one time, remember? They talked about doing it at the Galt Village Shopping Center. And Dennis McLean, Doug's partner, had arranged to make the contact with the attorney there. And they thought that the fire station was a better location. Is it, is it okay to put it on the agenda? I hate Zoom meetings. It's so hard to communicate. Um, clerk row?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think this is a, a great opportunity and I'm really excited about doing it. Um, and I would just like to respectfully ask that in the future, um, that these agreements make it by the Wednesday before that we've all agreed to and. You know, I know that Theo's expressed his wishes of it going forward tonight and I'm, I'm okay with that, but just for the record, please, please, please be respectful of those deadlines if at all possible.
Well, do, um, someone else raise a hand. Trustee Newman?
Uh, yes, uh, this was, I guess, for Gloria, uh, Gloria Peterson, what she, uh, the church she said. And if she could send me the, the same information so I could further it on to, uh, like my church. About the seniors at, uh, Christian, was it Christian Tabernacle?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, can I do that for you? Because I turned my phone off, so I'll, I'll send it to you, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other question?
No.
I think, I think Joanne McCollum also volunteered to help. She sent us all a number to help with that same event. So I think we got details in a email from Joanne McCollum about the event at the church on Saturday. And she included her number as a number also to be contacting to help people get their names submitted.
Okay, uh, you know, I haven't, I didn't get a chance to look at the last email before I came. So, yeah, it might be in our email.
But it isn't. So I don't know, like, people were writing down numbers, but she also shared a number, a phone number where, because I think people just really want to help people get those names submitted.
Yeah. No, yeah, I don't see it. I'm looking now. So, uh, but okay, yeah, because that would be real good, uh.
I'll go back and see what I can find. I also appreciate the, um. Clerk, I appreciate clerk, our clerk row's, um, statement about getting it in there. I understand the need to go and process the memo of understanding. But I also know, like, the importance of making sure that we get things done in a way that allows for the neighborhood watch meetings to get that information shared. So I think, um, we don't want to be too short on a timeframe for, like, saying something or approving it, because. So much information gets shared in those neighborhood watches, and I would think this would be one of those things with the dumpsters. That we would want to be shared with Neighborhood Watch.
All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes, trustee Wilson?
Just wanted to say that email was sent, uh, February twenty-seventh, uh, trustee Newman, February twenty-seventh. At, uh, seven forty-four PM from Joanne McCollum, uh, to the board and also our county commissioners were included in that email.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
We have six minutes. Quickly, I'll just update, um, the village committee. Which was trustee, um, Newman, clerk row, and myself have met. And we hope to bring the recommendation to the board at the next meeting, and we're looking at, you know, the same amount of mills as previous. I were, also worked with the Ann Arbor Board of Realtors, specifically, um, Hazilet, um, Crosby Robinson or Rosby. Robinson Crosby for, she's our civil service chair and the water resource with, um, Tajay Lee and Justin Hodge for a. Like a butterfly natural garden in Sugar Brook Park. They're looking at giving us a grant for that, so that's really exciting. Um, clerk Gerald Rowan and I met with AAATA and. Asked a lot of questions and we're still waiting for, um, a follow-up email on that. About what the proposed changes are. We shared that with the board, um, but we did ask a lot of questions and, um, objected to. Strongly about a few things and they were very, um. They were willing to listen and come back and study it to see if it's a possibility to change what the recommendations are. Um, bids for US twelve, and that improvement is very close to being let out. To, um, MDOT, and then the community center opened March first. They were very, very busy. And then gas renewal project in West Willow, um, DTE is hosting a Zoom. Meeting with the association in coordination with, um, Joanne McCollum on March ninth. From seven to eight PM, so there's a lot of things still going on. And we have four minutes, so if you want to take a break, everyone, and we'll be back at seven. Is that all right?
Okay.
Meeting in six fifty-six. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And if board members would go by, uh, not go by, it would state that they're present and in Ypsilanti Township or not. Clerk Row?
Uh, Ypsilanti Township, present.
Treasurer Eldridge?
Stan Eldridge, Ypsilanti Township, present.
Trustee Wilson?
Present, located in Ypsilanti Township.
Trustee Swanson?
Present, located in Ypsilanti Township.
Trustee Newman?
Uh, Newman, present, located in Ypsilanti Township.
And I know, um, Gloria is, is on the Zoom call, but her picture's in there, so when she come, um. To the meeting, my name is Brenda Stumbo and I am president in Ypsilanti Township Township Supervisor. Did I get everyone? At this time, if there are any public comments. Let's see. I do not see any, um, public comments. So we will go on to the consent agenda. There's a minutes of the February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one work session, regular meeting, statements and checks for the March second, two thousand and twenty-one, and the amount of one million, one hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and five cents. Trustee Peterson? In Ypsilanti Township?
Ypsilanti Township.
All right, thank you. We have a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Gerald Row?
Support, Eldridge.
Support by Eldridge. She'll approve the consent agenda. Are there questions or comments on that? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing that, motion carries. Attorneys report, Mr. Winters, do you have anything to report?
I'm, I'm sure, I really wasn't gonna say anything, but I, I think sometimes with, when you get all the, um. Bad news with the, um, the COVID, uh, day in, day out. It's still a good thing to, 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 just take a moment and acknowledge, um. Uh, some of the people in our community that, um, are very, very, um. Live out the, uh. Saying, am I, am I my brother's keeper? And I'm referring to, uh. There was a fire back in December over here at Arbor Circle. And I think, uh, the reports I read, uh, there was one gentleman that, uh. Backed his truck, uh, to assist, uh, neighbors. Who were trapped on their balcony, uh, to get down from the balcony. And using his, uh, own personal vehicle to, to do so, and actually, uh. May as a stain some, some injuries in the process, but, uh, came to the aid of, um. Uh, his brothers and sisters and being township residents to, uh, to be of assistance. And I know that, um. Trustee Swanson acknowledges on a regular basis, and rightfully so, the, the great teamwork we have inside the building, but we have so many other. Great people that just ordinary, living out their lives in this COVID environment that have stepped up and. There was one incident that came to mind, and I think all of you have seen, um, the challenges we have, though. With one resident this past week, uh, uh, being in need of, uh, some very serious. Um, social services and relocation from the environment she was living in. And, uh, they came about because of a neighbor being concerned about the packages being left on the. Porch, the mail not being taken in, and the Sears Department responding in a way where they actually, uh. And working with the old department of, um, the Mike's Department, OCS. Mike, Mike Radzik and Bill Elling, um, also being very instrumental and, uh, seeing that this, uh. Person was taken into a environment where she was safe and protected. So in spite of all the. Negative COVID impact it's had about all of us, our psyches and our relationships and socialization or like thereof, I, I think it's still important to remember that. We have a lot of good people here in this township. They're looking out for each other. And, uh, I know there's many, many other examples that I've read during the last year. And police reports and other things have kind of my attention, but those two just seemingly just stood out my mind this past week, and I just wanted to, uh. Uh, just acknowledge that we have a lot of great people here. They're trying their best in spite of what they're being dealt with. Uh, to look out for their, their, their fellow neighbor. And I just think it's a good part about the township that in times of. Crisis, you can still count on people to lend a helping hand and just wanted to bring that to your attention, because a great deal of time was spent in trying to. Make sure nobody was injured in those fires, as well as, again, helping out a neighbor that, in fact, needed help. So I just wanted, was that, is that of kindness and sacrifice should not go unnoticed.
All about love. Okay, you're right, absolutely. Under Old Business, we have the second reading Resolution two thousand and twenty-one oh five, which is proposed ordinance two thousand and twenty-one four ninety-four. An ordinance amending the Kona ordinances, chapter thirty-seven, the liquor. Clerk Row, if you would read the resolution, please?
Yeah, and I think Deputy Stanfield was gonna share that resolution, so y'all can look at it while I go. Um, but I have resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash zero five, amending chapter thirty-seven of the Ypsilanti Township Code of Ordinances. Whereas the Township Code of Ordinances, chapter thirty-seven, contains provisions regarding liquor licensing, liquor control enforcement, and liquor inspections. And whereas chapter thirty-seven was last updated and revised in accordance with option of ordinance number two thousand and five dash three six zero. On August sixteenth, two thousand and five. And whereas the number of new on-premise liquor licenses available to be approved by the Board of Trustees is limited by a quota system. Mandated by state law and controlled by state liquor control regulations. And whereas the number of on-premise liquor licenses available to be, uh, approved by Ypsilanti Township is the local government unit. Of the state is restricted by state law to one license for every fifteen hundred residents, which currently equates to a total. Of thirty-six on-premise liquor license based upon the two thousand and ten US Census data reporting the township's population. As fifty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-two people. And whereas to date, the Board of Trustees has approved a total of thirty-one new on-premise liquor licenses. Intended to be used by businesses operating in Ypsilanti Township for the benefit of township residents. And whereas the analysis of new on-premise liquor licenses previously approved by the Board of Trustees shows that. Seventeen of thirty-one new on-premise liquor licenses approved by the Board of Trustees. And intended for use in Ypsilanti Township, which equals approximately fifty-five percent. Of all licenses granted to applicants have been sold by the applicant and transferred for use in other local government units within Washtenaw County. And whereas in addition to the seventeen on-premise liquor licenses, having been sold and transferred out of the town, Ypsilanti Township. An additional five on-premise liquor licenses in Ypsilanti Township are currently hold, held in escrow and are not being used. And whereas the typical monetary value of an on-premise liquor license asset offered for sale in the open market. Has reliably reported to be as much as eighty times more than the current license application fee being charged by Ypsilanti Township. And whereas the seventeen new on-premise liquor licenses approved by the Board of Trustees and transferred out for use in other communities continue to be counted. In perpetuity against Ypsilanti Township's quota of on-premise liquor licenses in accordance with state law and regulations with no recourse available to retain or recover. Such licenses to promote future economic development for the benefit of township residents. And whereas in light of the pattern of loss of on-premise liquor licenses and the desire to improve the manner and process used to consider applications. For new on-premise liquor licenses, proposed ordinance number two thousand and twenty-one dash four nine four attached updates and revised. Revises chapter thirty-seven in its entirety, defines the authority and role of the Township Liquor Committee. Clarifies the application process for various township departments, updates definitions to align with changes in state law. Updates the minimum required contents of an app, license application. Removes application fees and refers to a new fee schedule to be adopted by the Board of Trustees. Defines the process and criteria for annual licenses renewal. And updates the criteria for non-renewal and revocation of a license. Now therefore be resolved that ordinance number two thousand and twenty-one dash four nine four attached here too is adopted by reference. I would so move the ordinance.
Motion Gerald Row?
Support.
Support Wilson?
Madam Chair, just a friendly amendment?
Yes, trustee.
Just to remove section, just to remove section thirty-seven, thirty-two and seven, section thirty-seven, thirty-three is discussed, uh, in the work session.
Friendly, friendly amendment. Thank you so much, Treasurer Eldridge.
Jimmy, do you accept that friendly amendment?
Yes.
Excellent. Any questions or comments? Great job, uh, Michael Radzik on dating it and getting all the input and, um. Thank you, Attorney Winters, for pointing out that section that could be a conflict and. We can hopefully address that sooner than later in the zoning ordinance. This is a ordinance. It's a second reading, so we have to do a roll call vote. Clerk Gerald Row?
Yes.
Treasurer Eldridge?
Yes.
Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee Swanson?
Yes.
Trustee Peterson?
Yes.
And trustee Newman?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. The motion carried unanimously. Number two is a request to approve the updated liquor license application. This was tabled at the February second, two thousand and twenty-one regular meeting. A motion to remove it from table is in order.
So moved.
Support.
Motion Wilson, supported by, um. Gerald Row to remove from table. We have to do a roll call vote again. Clerk Gerald Row?
Yes.
Treasurer Eldridge?
Yes.
Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Trustee Swanson?
Yes.
And trustee Newman?
Yes.
And Stumbo votes to remove it, um, from table. It's properly before the board?
I would so move to pass the new liquor license application process and form, Eldridge?
Trustee, supported by, um, trustee Wilson?
Support Peterson.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Do you have a question, Gloria? Or you, you were just?
No, I wasn't support, but I think I got stepped on. Somebody else did it.
Okay, no problem. Questions or comments? Great, Jay. We're not being bombed, are we, Lisa?
Hmm hmm.
Okay, just wanna make sure. Uh, we have a motion support. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. The next item under New Business, request approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Ann Arbor YMCA for twenty-one, twenty twenty-one summer camp program and authorize the signing.
So moved, Eldridge.
Support, Swanson.
Motion Eldridge, support Swanson. There's questions and, um, comments. We discussed this in the work session and. Hope and pray that the virus continues to. Flatten, and then, um, this proceeds since we missed it last year. I know Mr. Winters has reviewed it. So it's in proper form. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two is a request authorization to weigh the financial policy and purchase a two thousand and twenty-one Ford Expedition through the MyDeal Government Fleet Services. For the fire department in, in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars, which is budgeted. And line item two seventeen nine seven zero triple zero nine seven nine triple zero.
So move Peterson.
Support.
Motion Peterson, support Eldridge. Is there discussion? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two is request authorization to, oh, I'm sorry. Number three is a request to accept the proposal from OHM to provide professional engineering design services for the parking lot improvements at the Hewitt Road Fire Station in a not-to-exceed amount of twelve thousand, one hundred, which is budgeted in line item two seventeen nine seven zero 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 nine seven one zero zero eight.
So moved Eldridge.
Support Slanson.
We have a motion in support. Is there discussion? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Um, other business?
Are we bringing forth the water resource contract?
Yes, and we would like to authorize the contract for MOU for the Community Cleanup Day with the Washtenaw County Water Resources Commission and their staff to be held at the Ford Lake, I mean, at Ford Lake, Ford Boulevard Fire Station. Of course, contingent upon attorney review.
Move to approve.
Support Eldridge.
We have a motion in support. Is there discussion? Clerk Row did share this out at the the work session, and we'll try to make sure things like this don't happen again. Sometimes it does, and we do apologize, and I know the county would want to do it in a timely manner as well. So it all came together rather quickly, and it, sometimes it's better to add one agenda item than call a special meeting.
Madam Chair, I wanted to add that we will, we can put it, we'll put it in the packet as well. I didn't send the correct MOU earlier, and so you know, we'll get that updated in the packet, just so it's there for reference later.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Mr. Winters or? You're good? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We did board member updates and the work session. Is there any other things that happened between six fifty-eight and seven o'clock board meeting?
Madam Chair, I actually forgot one update.
Trustee.
Updates for the board and residents that may be listening, but last week I was appointed to the Board of Directors for Habitat for Humanity. And so at the end of March, it'll be our first, my first meeting with them. So if you have any, I know you already have contacts, Supervisor Stumbo, but if anyone has any questions, concerns regarding Habitat, let me know and I can take it to the Board of Directors.
Oh, excellent. Congratulations on that.
Thank you.
I guess I should announce, but it's scary. I was appointed to be the Chair of the Capital Campaign for the Proposed YMCA. And that was, yeah, I'm a little nervous. Talked to Stan about it. He's going to help every, we're going to need every help, all the help that we can get, now all the contacts and so you know, we have to make it a reality, and the only way to do that is to keep pushing and keep pushing and I've never done a capital campaign of ten million dollars, but Congresswoman Debbie Dingell has agreed to co-chair it as well and Treasurer Brenda McKinney is also, and I know Clerk Carol of Joy Row offered to help in the past, so I know all of us are willing to help, so we're going to reach out and see if you can get some contacts and help us make this a reality for our residents, so.
Nice.
All right, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved Eldridge.
Support Gerald Row.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at seven nineteen. Have a good night.
Okay, have a good night.